Good evening and welcome to the June 7th, 2021 Council. Sorry about that, I did not see John giving me the thumbs up, so I apologize. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Jenny Barrett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Let us pray. Loving Father, we give you thanks for this day and for this council. We pray now for the agenda before them today and for all those who are here to report and to express thoughts and ideas. We pray for discernment on decisions being made. God, we pray upon, we pray for help upon all of them and we lift up Bill and pray for him and his recovery and pray dear God for all of us who continue to deal with life. And so we ask that you anoint this place today and anoint the leadership before us and thus we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to begin by asking everyone to please turn their cell phone ringers in off position and we will start with roll call.
Councilwoman Phillips, present. Councilman Rob.
Here.
Councilman Gray.
Here.
Councilman Nettie.
Present.
Councilman Warner.
Here.
Councilwoman Barrett. Councilman Williams Jr.
Present.
Now if you did notice, if you have noticed that we do have Mr. Gray on Zoom, according to the governor's extension, we are allowed to do a virtual meeting. We will continue that through the emergency. So I'm going to be talking probably a little slower because there was a slight delay and so he can hear us. We also have the capability, we don't have the ordinance written yet, but legislation has passed law for us to continue to do, it's called a hybrid meeting, which is what we are actually doing here. We have to see the person and hear the person and so we already have the system set up to do that. So once we get the ordinance reviewed, get Jeff a chance to look at it, we will look at it and we will present that hopefully the next council meeting. But for situations like this, when we have someone who's sick and or who's unable to attend, we can still host a city council meeting and actually he counts as the quorum. So, but there's a lot of stipulations that go with that. We want to make sure we understand it and we're good with it before we walk. Cause we have the guidelines, we can actually make it stricter if we want. We can't make it looser, but we can make it stricter, so we want to review that. So this is a way to start the process, so we do have the ability to do this tonight. So we just found out, we were trying to figure that out. So welcome, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on down to item two. We have the minutes of the May 17th, 2021 regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to that? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Still moved.
We have a motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. On down to new business, item A, we can skip. The commissioners have, I believe, changed your meetings, is that correct, Jeff? Did they change your meeting date on that?
I was here last meeting last week, so I'm not sure.
Okay, I know they did not get that done, so we will again put that off. We're going to wait for the commissioners to get that done before we do anything with that. And I'll move on down to item B. We will have the public hearing and approval pending ordinance 3660 for the fire code violation. Scott, you want to come in up, sir? Before I open the public hearing, if you want to talk about it a little bit, then I'll open up the public hearing.
Yeah, basically, last time I presented the ordinance, it's just basically an ordinance that allows me to enforce the fire code if I have to. Currently, we don't have anything and you know, if I black violations and then you know, people just, you know, keep going, keep going, keep going. Don't, you know, try to correct things, then this gives me the ability to, you know, enforce the fire code if I have to. You know, we currently don't have an ordinance that allows me to do that. If I have, if I get into a situation where I have to have something fixed, then I got to call the state fire marshals office and involve them. So most places do have an ordinance like this, so this just gives me the ability to, you know, enforce it if I have to.
Any questions for Fire Chief Jones?
This closure on property, does that include a rental industrial site?
It would include any, any type of commercial site that we inspect, yeah. Any type of business.
It's all right, man.
Any other questions? I know you compared this to a lot of other districts who love to do it. Jeff, you reviewed it as well, so it's very comparable to other fire districts. Okay, I'm going to close this down. Oh, sorry.
That's okay, just read it, is it hearing only, no action?
When we do the public hearing, then we can take action after that. I have to open up a public hearing, so I'm going to close this section down and open it up for the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who has anything to say on the amended, I'm sorry, the pending ordinance 3660 fire code violations? Is there anyone out there, sir?
No.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion to approve pending ordinance 3661. I'm sorry, 3, good, night, 3660. Too many numbers tonight, I'm first reading.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion to suspend the rules.
Still moved?
Second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Still moved.
We have a motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried, thank you very much. Okay, approval pending ordinance 3661, amended EMS salary ordinance, please, you want to come in here, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't think I had any questions, should have received a letter, kind of explained the situation. For me, this is something I've been kind of working on for a while. I'm familiar about it, talked to Jeffrey about it, to make sure that we were putting things the right way. Explains the situation that we're in. The one, of course, I, I have gotten a couple of times is about the ordinance itself. We're only changing one line in this entire thing and that is the line right above section two. That is the only thing that has been added to this. The rest of it is existing, that was already approved with the contract earlier in the year. So that is the only, if you could call it a red line version, goes one, two, three, four, five, six, eight words are the only addition to it, the only change to the ordinance.
Explain that so everyone can understand what the changes are.
Okay, so the, when you're full time, you receive not only a salary, but you receive all sorts of stipends and bonuses for certifications, clothing allowances, et cetera. That is not included in the part-time pay. So all the part-time people are getting is the yearly salary divided by the number of hours that a full-time person is scheduled to work, not actually that they work, scheduled to work, which is close to 3,000. I think it's 28 something, it's more than your normal because of the rotation. So that kind of artificially drops that rate down, in my opinion. So what we're trying to do is kind of even the playing field where, yes, we're giving them more per hour, but they're not getting all the other additional benefits that are listed. They don't get sick days, they don't get longevity, they don't get clothing, they don't get funeral leave, they don't get any part of the pension, they don't get specialty pay, they don't get vacation, and they don't get paid for holidays. I'm just trying to level the playing field to make us a little more competitive with everyone else. We, we're just so low that it's not, I can't, I can't be remotely competitive. So this is just a starting point for me. This is to get the part-time only up to a level that we're marketable, that we're relevant in this day. And that's, that's why it's just for the part-time.
And the reason is, we're still struggling hiring full-time paramedics. Everyone is, not just us, but everyone, but in order to get people to come in on extra shifts from outside, we have to do something to get them here, to alleviate the overtime.
Like I said, we have, I have three on my roster, or had three, between the time I started on this and today. One of them resigned. Excellent medic, excellent medic, really nice guy, ER loved him, he was great to work with. And he left because somebody could pay him a lot more per hour. And he said it has nothing to do with you guys, he said, I love it with you guys. He said, but if I'm only away from my family and my kids for 24 hours and I can make twice as much money as I make now, why wouldn't I do that? And I said, I agree, you know, I'm in the same boat, you know, I've got a three-year-old and a one-year-old. I don't want to be gone from them any more than I have to. And if I can make twice as much money and be gone the same amount of time, then I won't do it. So that, it's economic, it just comes down to straight, you're supporting your family and you want to be gone as the least amount possible, so. But when I started this, I had three, he resigned from me, I've got two. Right now, out of six full-time medics, I've got one off injured, injured himself on the job last week. And I've got one out on jury duty, so out of six full-time medics, I've got four that are working this week. So it just kind of shows you where we are at as far as staffing wise. So I'm hoping this helps, I'm not guaranteeing anything, I'm just, it's a starting point, it's something that, it can't hurt, so. And if I get no takers, I get no part-time people, then you really haven't spent anything because they're only getting money per hour work. So if we raise it and it doesn't help and I don't get any money and nobody works any additional hours, it's not really costing us anything, so.
Yeah, it is in overtime.
In overtime, it is.
So we've got to solve this problem from one way.
So I guess it is costing us in that respect, yes.
And your people are going to get wore out.
And we're, we're there.
That's the second part of this, is they're getting worn out.
We are getting to that point.
So we've got to find a good solution and again, it's, everyone's in the boat.
It's, and this is a baby step, this is, this is the first step of some, of a lot of things that I'm working on, so this is just the first step in it, so.
My question.
Your last paragraph on the front page where the, the rates are listed. Is that an Indiana industrial average or is that out of our, of? No, that's just our people, that's just out of ours, so. Lowest overtime rate, 20 through 10, that's the lowest overtime rate of any of the medics that we have right now. With the highest one being, what, 2804? That's just within our department, okay, that's all that is.
I'm sure you jumped through all the who's, but I just want to double check. The, opening up the contract for that one little section, is there any conflict with any other workers by doing this or the union?
The union, as far as, I have talked to the union, they are fine with this, this is, this is outside the contract. Most of the part-time people are not in the union because they haven't met the qualifications to join the union, so this is outside the union's. To me, it's outside the union's purview. And if you want any more legal, you're going to have to talk to Jeffrey.
Well, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I, I, we've, we spoke, we think we're on, on good legal ground, that we're not doing anything that would cause problems, cause conflict, you just don't know until after you've done it, but I'm not going to sit back and not do something because I'm scared that somebody's going to get mad.
Well, absolutely.
I think I've got to look forward and try to do something positive here, so.
Trying to alleviate the overtime problem and?
Yeah, and if I can, like I said, if I can drop some, if I can drop some overtime, great. Border work, I'm assuming approved the transfer for my overtime earlier today. I was not able to make that meeting, but you know, we're already, have used our overtime budget and we're moving money from other funds into it, so. This is an ongoing problem, this is not the end of this, this is not the last time you're going to hear about it. This is just kind of my, my first big push to get this, to do something to fix this problem and not ban date it.
And Clint's filling shifts as well. So like first city council, he's like, I can't be there because I'm filling a shift, I'm like, then you be there and fill that shift.
Yeah, I worked last night.
He's filling a lot of shifts, so.
I worked 24 hours last night and so that's why I didn't make, I wasn't quite conscious when you had the border works meeting earlier, so I was pretty good from that, so.
I mean, he's doing, he's working.
But that wasn't the original plan, right, that you worked many shifts?
No, we come to that when we were trying to figure out a solution.
Is I could, but you know, it would kind of be, and I do, I fill a lot of day shift type stuff when I'm there anyways. And they're pretty, they're real good about, hey, we know you're doing paperwork, you know, we're just going to bug you if we absolutely need you. This was, I was actually, you know, one of two paramedics, so I didn't have that option yesterday. I did get a little office work done, but it's trying to get everything done and do that when you're doing a Sunday or, you know, and then you're out the next day. Kind of making it a little more difficult, but hey, we know we're through it, so if it's, if that's what it takes to get the situation partially fixed, then that's what we'll do, so.
We appreciate that effort.
Yeah, Clint's been great, you work with him, absolutely fantastic.
Appreciate that extra effort.
Okay.
I have one more question. For example, the three individuals that you had working for you and one decided to leave to go get more pay. All right, is there any way possible, I'm just going out on a limb, like those three part-time employees, they can go on a contract or something or, you know what I'm saying, just to lock them in for six months?
Yeah.
So if they find a job that's going to pay them double, they still have to fulfill that six months? Or that, I don't know, I'm reaching, I'm reaching now.
Yeah, with the medics, right now, it's a, it's an employee market, so. I think that may work against us if I say, okay, I'm going to hire you, but you got to stick around for six months, they're going to be like, hmm, no, I don't think so. Maybe that might work against us. There is some, we've talked about, you know, where we, when we pay for the schooling, if we pay for some of their schooling, then they are locked in. And they have to stay for a period of time or they have to pay it back prorated for the amount of time that they spend with. So yes, in that case, yes, they do sign a contract. But for the part-time, it's, we never before had a minimum number that you had to work. You could basically work one day a year and stay on the roster, I've eliminated that. You do have to do, and it's a very low number, it's three shifts a quarter, that's one a month, you know, and so if, it's not a huge help, but it's a little bit of a help. So we have, I have instituted that just so we don't have people on our roster that aren't working because we're still paying, you know, certain things we have to pay for them anyways. We do offer some online education subscriptions and things like that, it's not hugely expensive, it's like $20 a year, but it's still something. So I don't want to be paying for something that someone is going to use, but never, we never get the benefit of their service, so I, I'd have implemented that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not, and I'm not opposed to any idea anybody has, I'm just, I'm, I, I've looked at it, I've talked to people, I've talked to people with other departments, I've talked to friends that are in other departments, in other states, in other counties. There's not a golden bullet for this, there's just not a golden bullet that's going to fix everything and it's, it's very individualized. Things that work in some places are not working in others. Yeah, so straight money, a lot of times, is not going to be the total answer. It helps, but it's not the total answer, so.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Clint. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve pending orders through 661 on first reading.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion to suspend the rules.
Still moved.
Second.
And a motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading on pending ordinance 3661.
Still moved.
We have a motion in a second, do you, do you second?
Second.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, sorry, Bill, I'm rushing you, you're giving more of a delay. Okay, thank you. Item D, appropriate funds for Duke Energy Contract for the electrical outlets and new downtown streetlights. What we did, the border works approved earlier, we started an additional appropriation, we're using money that's already appropriated, but when we did the first contract, we asked them for electrical outlets on the poles. Somehow they didn't do that, when we were walking through, talking about, like, oh, where's the outlet's going to go? And they're like, there are no outlets, so I was like, no, 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 we got to have outlets. They won't let us wrap up the outlets for the payment. It was $12,493, but outlets were on top of the lights. It was 20, around 24, what was it, a month? It was around 24 something a month.
25.
24, all right there, 2542 a month for all 24 lights for electric, so it's not that big of a charge. Yeah, I read that one already, 12,432. So we're going to take that out of budget, already money's already budgeted for that, out of cumulative cap rate. And we just need permission to do that because it's over $5,000.
Was this their problem? Did they make a mistake?
A mistake that probably should have been caught, but no one, we didn't see it anywhere, so it's, it's ours though, so if we want them, we got to pay for them.
We would have paid for it either way.
Either way.
Well, I'm sure.
It's just not in the monthly payment, it's going to be a one-time fee.
And they said we couldn't wrap it in a monthly payment, so I don't think they would have done it the first time anyway, so.
Just wondered whose oversight it was.
Um, there's a bunch of communication back and forth, so.
Who knows?
We asked for it, but apparently they didn't get it, so. So I just need approval to appropriate the funds for, I mean, just appropriate, but we already have the funds in the, in the budget, I just want to spend that money.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Okay, I have a recommendation to take item E and F together. Rosemary?
Resolution 2021-48 is a resolution to reimburse $1,040, I'm sorry, $1,074.98 into the police telephone. Resolution 2021-49 is a resolution to reimburse $15 into the cable telephone.
Okay, questions?
Moving to approve the resolutions.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you very much. Okay, approval pending ordinance 3662, this is establishing a new non-reverting fund for fire prevention code and fire enforcement. This goes right along with what we just passed for the fire code violations, but now we have to have a fund for, to receive those funds. So any questions on that? If not, entertain a motion to approve pending ordinance 3662 for the non-reverting fund for fire prevention code enforcement.
Motion.
Second.
And a motion to second, on first reading, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any opposed, same sign. And a motion to suspend the rules.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second to suspend the rules, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Still moved.
We have a motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you very much. Okay, we have another recommendation to take items H through U, which is the adding one parking space and deleting of all the other ordinances that Clarence come up with. Everyone has everything that we discussed, are there any questions on that?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
The distance was measured by someone, I think it.
I'm sorry?
The distance from the Ninth Street up Grand for the school bus stop.
Bolos?
I'll just make mention that on our GIS map from the county, I measured from Ninth Street north and 90 feet without the, that walkway comes out to the street, so.
Is that the way it was measured?
Where?
From Ninth, over on Grand.
From Ninth back, because they wanted on Grand, right?
Right, they wanted on Grand where the sidewalk comes out.
Yeah, it comes out of the school, I think it's easier for the buses and kids and.
But since they changed all that, that's where they're doing it, but was that measured by you guys or?
It wasn't measured by myself, McCrory went and looked at it.
Okay.
And with, I spoke with him about it and he determined that was a local spot to put the bus stop, so.
Because she asked me and I said, I don't have anything to measure with at this time, so. And I seen 90 feet on there, somebody must have measured it, I'm sure.
You might have, did he get with you on that?
No, I just, while we were talking on the phone, I brought up the GIS map and just.
I know Diana was working with Clarence and McCrory on it, so whoever made it, I don't know.
It appears.
Unless they got it off of that, the GIS itself, so.
It's lost where it's in the proper places, the schools from the avenues.
I'm glad you thought to even ask, do, do they want something somewhere else, since all the ones were eliminated?
They were arguing with the people parking up on Grand Avenue is what they told me and I said, how about a bus sign out here and put a bus stop out here for the children coming out the side door? That would be great.
And it worked.
So, I'm taking, it's going to be up to the street department to take all the old markings out.
Yeah.
That's their problem.
About this week.
That's their problem.
It's going to rain.
It's not going to wash them away, that's for sure.
There was a couple loading zones that's being eliminated and have we talked with Connect, make sure that's okay?
They weren't in front of Connect, they were down.
Connect's has theirs on Seventh Street and they have theirs on Sixth Street.
Well, you're eliminating one on Sixth Street.
That's west of that.
It says east, east of the alley.
I mean, I take it back, it should be west of the alley on, by the fire station. If that's the right one.
Let me find out what.
That's the one that you and I looked at before and you said, yeah, let's do that.
That, that would be the one, keep letter P, I know it could be that.
Because some of these carry the same numbers. And the one, one of my.
On Sixth Street, one space east of the alley between Grand Avenue and Central Avenue.
See, that's right there by their door.
That shouldn't be that one.
That's what it says.
That, that was meant to be on Wash's.
Well, there's one in there on.
Wash's.
Yeah, over by the fire station, yeah, but this one eliminates the one there by Connect's door, east of the alley.
We don't want to do that.
No, take 6731 out.
I'm glad you caught that, because I've looked at this so many times, looks like vegetable soup then. The ones that I was questioned about was on Central Avenue, was coming out there in front of the attorney's office there, I believe is where it used to be.
Baker.
It should have been west of the alley instead of east of the alley. Evidently, that may, that may be the only problem is.
But I know Connect has one and he's happy with the one on Sixth Street and the one on Seventh Street.
Okay, so that keeps that.
That was my oversight on this, I apologize.
That's okay, I just.
It may just be, yeah, it may just be a question of changing east to west and because he said they were, the one you were talking about was in front of the attorney's office, which is west of the alley.
Right.
Maybe that, maybe it's just a question of direction, it may be that that still needs to be.
But it should be on Central Avenue is the problem. The one where I'm talking about.
Oh, on Central, so it's not on Sixth, oh, okay, okay.
And the only other ones on Sixth Street would be there by the fire station, it used to be the old liquor store. Those need to be on there too.
Okay, yeah, eliminate that.
So 630, 6731, we're not deleting, correct?
Correct.
Did he say not deleting?
Not.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I'm marking it out, I'm deleting it, we're not going to delete it.
We're deleting the parking, we're deleting the, we're deleting the ordinance, but not the parking.
So I deleted this, so I won't delete it.
Okay, we have everything straightened out because there's a bunch of them here. Most of these we've discussed are just no longer in use, so. Just cleaning up the ordinances. So we have approval for pending ordinance 3663, 3664, 3665, 3666, 3667, 3668, 3669, 3670, 3672, 3673, 3674, 3675, and 3676. That's a mouthful. We have a motion?
Still moved.
And a second, all in favor on first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Any opposed, same sign? And a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
We have a motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? And a motion for third and final reading.
So moved.
We have a motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, buddy.
Egg clams, one thing I didn't ask, well, are the signs still up, can we go get the signs out then? Some of them I noted.
Some signs are still up, some signs are not.
Okay. Maybe we'll make a list and send them around, clean it up. Item V, uh, requesting permission to advertise for additional purpose to fund full-time ordinance officer. Like I sent everyone a document, I was describing the reason why, and we're going to take it from general fund, but I'm just asking for permission to advertise for that.
I have quite a few questions about that.
Okay.
From my past experience and other officers here, I've been utilized to do this same very thing. During that time, one officer towed one, one season, three, over three hundred cars, and I know another officer, uh, sighted over a hundred yards in one season. I've contacted five departments of our same size, two of those use full-time officers and rest of them use the law enforcement officers. With the financial situation the way it is and what we're looking to pay this person, I would prefer that we hire another police officer with specification of him do part-time ordinance and part-time police. That will alleviate some of the overtime with the police department and will alleviate the ordinance problem. This way, we wouldn't have to put him on a reserve, uh, force, which we don't have yet. Because there needed to tow cars off the street by law. There had to be an officer to do that. And there's times when, um, the ordinance officer's going to need somebody to tow a car. And I, I honestly believe that part-time is going to cover it, because God, whoever hired him, has now, he's very active, I've heard with him, he's, uh, very much on the ball. Uh, he's already found things that I took him around and showed him, he said, I already done that, I already done this, I said, well, you don't need me in the car then.
He's very good.
He is.
That's why I want to make him full-time.
But, um, I just don't see financially where it's going to be prudent for us to do that unless we make him an officer.
Didn't, didn't we, uh, wasn't Dennis authorized, did, I don't know whether deputizes is the right, I thought we gave him.
No.
No, you have to be an officer to do that, he's going to be a non-officer position.
Okay.
He's going to do more than just ordinance enforcing, he's going to be all ordinances, right now, we're all enforcing, only what we're doing is removing vehicles and grass and trash, when there's a whole lot more areas that he can do. The only one where he really needs to have an officer is when we tag a car, that he tags a car within seventy-two hours, you tell it that an officer comes, takes care of it.
Gotcha.
So it's, he's starting out as a non-officer, I L O P, which is the lowest pay, because he's not an officer, he's never going to get up at the officer side.
Right.
Um, and so that's why we're looking to start him as a, under, under non-I L, I, I was saying it wrong, I L enforcement academy?
Yeah.
Yeah, the man's academics are killing me today. Um, so it's a non-officer pay.
Okay.
And plus, he's going to be working directly under, he's, we're going, he's going to work directly for me and the police both, but he's working really directly with me under my office.
Right.
So that I can control that and start going out after different things. Uh, so that's why we're doing that, it's, uh, financially, I understand the concern with, uh, going to full-time, we're spending all of those are budget, Bolos, and I'm going to be wrong if I say thirty thousand on part-time. Um, so we're looking to increase the full-time, um, I've talked with other mayors and other areas, and this is the route they said to go. Um, in fact, Jeff's been working with one, um, said the exact same thing, he goes, he didn't think there was a need for it until he got it, he says, the best thing I've ever done, and they're not using an officer. And the point is not to go to courts, uh, going to courts does, we thought it was going to work, it's not working. They're, they're backed up, they can't get them in, the last one took over two months to get in the court.
Especially now, courts are so bad.
We can't wait two months, and they're busy. So Jeff's researching a model and it works, uh, because we actually started implementing some of it this week, uh, even though we got to finish writing this piece for it, um, where it never goes to court. In fact, in one instance where he, the company, where the city he's working with, um, the guy's only been to court once in four years, and he takes care of it at the door, which is what we need. Part-time guys can't do that, because there's so much to do, they can't get it all done. And yes, it's going to be busy year-round, which was my first question, I was like, there's no way, then, this is a city half our size, they're saying, absolutely, it's a need, it's the best thing I've ever done. So that's why we're looking to do that, and I am keeping it in a non-officer position, uh, for that reason, because he's going to be working directly with me. That might change over time, I don't know, once we get up and running, but for right now, he's going to be reporting to me and Bolos, so there's no question about it, he has worked with both. But that's why we want to get that going.
Really needs to be deputized or put on a reserve.
No, there's no reason for it.
To the women, yeah, because, yeah, I'll disagree with you on that, because they're going to come across vehicles that need to be towed and these guys are going to be busy and they're not going to be able to do it. And then it's going to be forgotten and he's going to have to make another round around, and they're, they're tearing stickers off these cars like no tomorrow.
As soon as he puts a sticker, he takes a picture.
Right.
So they can tear them off if they want, we got pictures of it.
So, so the, the officer, on-duty officer is not going to know it unless they, they forward reports.
He uses Spillman, they see all this.
Yeah, he set up on Spillman, um, so our guys will look at it and simply what we've been doing here lately was, all he does is communicate what vehicles are at the seventy-two hours or beyond, and they just going to get it towed, I mean, it's, that's the, the least of their, uh, issues there is towing the vehicle. Bigger issues are going to be grass and the trash, especially, we've been dealing with certain individuals for months, where this way, it's just going to eliminate it.
We have a result for that.
Right, yeah, we can get it resolved now instead of waiting two or three months and get it done. So as far as the, um, towing the vehicle, Clarence, I don't, I don't think that's going to be that big of an issue as far as busyness for our guys, I mean, they can, they'll be able to go tow a vehicle. Although, it's all done at that point, I mean, all they do is call the tow truck, meet us there, we do the impound and it's, it's gone.
The problem and the breakdown we've been having on the whole process is notification, and I got a resolve of that last week, um, Mr. Butch helped me understand where to go, research, uh, Indiana courts on proper notification, there's three ways of notification, which, I mean, you guys see this every day, but we were utilizing one means of notification, which is, it's good, but there's two other ways of doing it, and we were doing certified letters.
Right, and that's changed through the years.
That's changed, so there's two other ways.
Slim line.
That's right, there's two other ways of notification, which we've, we've now, we've now implemented those two ways, and that has already, just in the, we just implemented it last week, it's already been very successful.
Yeah, he's, he's, I mean, he's a lot more organized with, um, the Spillman and, uh, spreadsheets, so he's, he's coming along pretty quick.
Yeah.
I mean, he's actually got sections in town that he works daily, so he just does like a clockwork, instead of just going here and there and back there, he'll work a section of the city at a time a day, so.
Pretty good.
I know that he's very active, because I do know that he's not only contacted this gentleman across the street, he's also contacted property owner and said, you know, you can't evict him.
Right. He's been very good.
Yeah, and the property owner's been real helpful also, so.
And I know he's been on, on top of everything that I've talked to him about.
I mean, he comes in every morning and gives me a report, so I, I know, you know, understand what, what he's actually doing that day or what he did prior, so.
He's working really.
Yeah, he is, he communicates well.
Yes.
Will we start seeing the reports?
Yep.
I mean, we, we find out, but he'll, he'll have a better spreadsheet.
Right, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, we'll get that worked out.
Do you know how soon they'll start doing that?
We can start. Yeah, we, we'll have him start getting that spreadsheet and make sure he emails it to you, where we've tried that in the past and it just never happened.
What I'm, what I'm doing.
The monthly thing is way plenty.
Okay.
What I've done with him, just like on the mowing, because he's out there, he's living on hours right now, it's part-time, he works so many hours, he can't get it all done. So what I'm bringing, I said, you bring your stuff to us on the grass mowing, and then Diana's supposed to spreadsheet, and we know, we have, the date it was issued, the date they have to complete it, once they get past that, it goes to, the next step was we mow it. Once they mow it, we get a completion date and everyone get a copy of that, so you can see that, but that one just started, so that one's going to be small, but he's already, we've already got a bunch of them, so. The other problem we're going to have is, hate to say it, but the manpower side mowing them right now, because we're having a hard time getting some more help, uh, to come on, the street department, so. But we are going to start taking care of that, a better way, a very proactive approach, just so people know, when it goes to doors, not a, we're going to bully you, that is not the goal. The goal is, here's an ordinance violation, I'm here to help you, work with you to get it cleaned up, um, the point is not to want to start punishing, that, that's not the goal, it's, here's a problem, we need to address it, let's help get it cleaned up. If they just refuse, like has been in the past, that's where the processor fines, different things can win the place. But it's a faster process, to me, it's a better process, because you're mediating it at the door, and you're working with, with everyone to get it cleaned up.
I think there might be a problem that just occurred, I mean, if you have him as a reserve officer or as an officer, where do you draw the line of his ordinance enforcer duties and police duties? Because if he's, if he's a reserve officer or officer, where do you draw the line, I mean, what, what?
Secondly, I can't pick my ordinance officer if I do that, because now, it goes by, they get to bid on it, correct?
Um, if, if it was a full-time.
If he was, if he was a full-time officer.
Yeah, they have to go through a testing process.
I really couldn't, we picked a certain skill set for this.
I see problems with that, I mean, I, we need him as, and like you said, there are other ordinances other than just trash.
Yeah, it's a broader picture.
I mean, I mean, we, we entertained that, Clarence, we did.
We looked at everything.
That as a possibility, honestly, um, trying to specifically what you mentioned, you know, um, part-time ordinance and part-time police officer, that's, that would be difficult to work out.
Yeah, where do you draw the line?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, I was actually laying that way to him, then Jeff and I had a good conversation.
Because we've, we've all done it, but the other side of that is, if, if you don't want to do that, the reserve will be that the way to go, because that alleviates the police officer from have to be involved with, you got, with, with this kind of ordinance stuff, because a reserve can take care of it, all of it.
How would we get the reserve, though, you know, I mean, we've got a part-time, uh, positions now.
He's already got, he's already got his training, so you have to use mandated reserve, uh, off, as in, reserve officer.
Potentially, but I, I think, and I, and I'm not saying I disagree necessarily, Clarence, but I think the one thing that'll come of this is his, being diligent in his notes, having structure, having, um, a course of action that he goes, that will show that we're having issues with actually physically getting the cars towed. That will show that, here, here's when I put the notice on, here's when I alerted, um, law enforcement that we needed to have these three cars towed, they didn't get towed, or they didn't get towed for two days. That, that timeline will show us that we have a problem and we need to figure out a different way to go, and maybe it's a conversation with the chief, maybe it's a different, a different avenue, but.
I was just thinking, would grease the wheel better?
Potentially, but, but there's, there's also a control component, and I don't want to get too much into the weeds with this, but there is a control component where there are major benefits to, to not having, to, to allowing the mayor to be able to dictate to the ordinance enforcer what, what duties they have. And for us to create a SOP, for us to create a job description. We lose some of those.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, this is more of a positive way to attack it than, than.
I, I went into it with, I mean, I, I spent the first six months trying to figure out, how do we expedite the process to get these folks into court, and how do we get it going? And then I, I had a really great discussion with somebody in, in a community that I think is very successful in this avenue, and he said, I've been doing this for nine years, I went to court once.
Nine, I thought it was four, I see, I was wrong.
That's, everything's slow, you slow it down, his key is follow-up, but he's got a phenomenal personality, and, and he goes and talks to people, and, and a lot of the problems didn't become a problem overnight, and they're not going to get fixed overnight.
Right.
But if you go to that, to that person's residence the next week, and they've got a third of it cleaned off, then we're happy, right? Because the next week, but the follow-up is the key, that's, that's, and that's where the structure of it, to me, is incredibly important, we need to be able to see, here's what, here's where I did, here's the letters I sent, here was the follow-up I did, here's how I followed up the next time, here's, and, and I think we'll be able to track problems. And I'm not saying you're not absolutely correct in that we'll be a problem on the back end, I'm just thinking that if we can get to that point, it may not be, because it may be that we have a guy that is so active that he, after forty-eight hours after the tag, he goes and talks to the person.
And follow-up.
Nick, Nick does this, Nick actually chases the stuff around, but I've seen, seen that, because I was riding with him, he goes back to his places where he's looked at, and I, I observed him doing that, and he follows stuff up, he don't just, go talk to him and leave him alone, I mean, he was after this guy over here, he was after the, the property owner, and he went up and checked on a lady's property, it had tall grass, and he said, well, I see she mowed the top of it, but she's elderly and she didn't mow the sides of it, so I'll talk to her again and see what's going to happen. But he, he's a follower, so.
Yeah, he's constantly doing that daily.
And you have to follow up on it.
He breaks up the city in sections, and that's what he does, so really, and as the city goes on, he's following up at least once a week at portions of the city.
And you have to follow up on the follow-up, I think that's where it's been, until it's completed.
Completed.
Yeah, I think a lot of times we've been going.
And he'll do that, I mean.
I'm saying, well, they've started, they're going to finish it, and you can't assume that, but, yeah, I think he's, I've met him too, and I.
Yeah, he's excited about it, so.
He's been phenomenal.
He just went down and talked to the guys on Eastern again too, when I was with him.
Yeah, yeah, he stays on it.
They were down shopping and stuff around.
Right.
And the world go around.
Because he tagged nine, nine vehicles.
It, it's easy to throw a letter away, it's a whole different thing when you got a guy on your, on your front step wanting to.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
That's what Diane and I was talking about when we talked to Dennis, he said, well, we write letters, we write letters, and then we, we can't get anywhere, and I said, well, why don't you just issue a summons? And we went to that, you know, if it comes to summons, it's, it's your summons.
Well, that's kind of what they're, it's not a summons now, it's more of a citation, isn't it? And then if it's taken care of, they get rid of the citation, isn't that, so you have so long to get rid of the citation, if, if it's taken care of, you know, everything's clear. If, if not, then you pay. And, and I, I want to say this, because I don't know that it's been said, but with this coming up, people who park up over the curbs on sidewalks, you don't want to do that anymore.
He's, he's already on that.
Yeah, but I want, I want people to be notified, you know, if you're doing that, stop.
That's what he's doing, he's notifying first, if it continues, then it becomes a different story.
Right, but it doesn't hurt to alert people that that's, that's happening, because we've talked about it before, and it's, I mean, it's, it's here, guys, where, you know, you just can't do it anymore.
And he's good, he's good at it, he catches it, he looks for it, he's doing good, but there's more, I want him to start looking for, but right now, he's only got time to do what he can.
And he's playing catch-up, he's, he's got files that previously has started that he's cleaning up, so it's, it's a process still with that, because he's just transitioning over to prior files, so he didn't even ask for another file cabinet, so.
Well, good, and another thing that, another thing that has been, is parking on the wrong side of the street. You know, just simple things, you, you think it's just trash and just yards and whatever, there's so much more, but you, it's, it's not going to be the, do it as you've done it. It, yeah, exactly, so don't be surprised if you.
Don't do that.
Yeah.
I know he's just getting started, but would he be open, like Clarence, to travel with him around the streets and stuff?
He'll be happy riding with him.
Oh, yeah, he's open to all that.
Yeah.
And he, I don't know if you guys know, if you gave him his number, he'll, he'll contact you back, I've already contacted him on some other stuff, and he says, I'll look into it, and I'm sure he will, I don't have to go back and check to see.
He does, he's good.
Yeah, anybody can contact him, yeah.
And he will call you back.
We found the right guy, we want to keep him, that's kind of my.
That's the thing, if you keep him as part-time, if he finds something better, he's going to be gone, we have to, we have to learn about that, yeah.
I don't plan on objecting to this, but I do have two concerns.
Okay.
One of them is, um, how busy will he be during the winter months? And the other is, um, you've got a lot on your plate running the city, so to be a daily supervisor of this guy, I think that just sounds like a lot on you, and probably ought to go to the police or the street department or something.
And what happens there is ninety percent will call him before they call me anyways, so he's involved right from the first phone call, I mean, they can call us, but they, they'll call.
In reality, it's saving me a step by having him directly with me because I just.
I'm surprised they don't call the street department. I mean, like grass, people parking on the curb, that kind of stuff.
They call mayor.
Because the office has always been under the police umbrella, so that's who they call first.
We get calls for everything, so.
Yeah.
And that's fine. I mean, but if, but once we get up and running, we get her smoothness, just checking in with me, what we got, but then he's gonna really be working.
Yeah, well, we just all meet together. I mean, it's, it's, it'll work out. It'll work itself out.
And in the way you still have the, the violations and other ordinances, the book over there. I mean, it's not just, you know, those two.
We, we deal with a lot of phone calls and just trying to get resolved, orders violations. So having him actively out doing it will take a lot off our plate anyway.
Yeah, it does.
Because I'm confident in what he does. And every time I tell, give him something, it's done. I don't have to question it. He does a great job with it.
And to follow up on that, there are, there are not limitations on what he can be doing during the winter months. You know, find other things that can benefit the city. I mean, you know what I mean? There are, in this capacity, in this role, he, we have the ability to, to get him to do other things that maybe we wouldn't be able to allow to have if we were doing the law enforcement side. So I, I think he'll be able to stay.
That'd be great that he did such a good job the first twenty-four months that he runs out of things.
Oh, I don't think that's ever gonna happen.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
I don't think that's gonna happen, but I know what you're saying.
You don't know.
Put it this way, Jeff talked to a city half our size. The guy's been doing it for nine years and he's not running out of things and he's very effective at it.
And the beautiful thing is you get to start narrowing your scope, right? I mean, the more, the more you clean up, the more you, you, there always could be nitpicking, so you can get to that point. We want somebody to complain that he is out there too much and he's being way too picky, right?
That's right. That's right.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'm just asking for permission to advertise for additional appropriation for a full-time ordinance enforcer.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Yeah.
Oh, my pink light. Okay. We will get the, uh, we'll get the advertisement out and we'll be looking at the next meeting. Okay. Item W, permission for Main Street to submit Preserving Indiana Letter of Interest. Brad?
Thanks for being patient.
No problem.
Guess I should have put you first, shouldn't I? I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's no problem at all. I, uh, I'm Brad Wilson. I'm representing Discover Conneville, which is our local Main Street organization. Uh, the mayor and I believe Diana, um, had been contacted by our OPRO representative, a lady by the name of Collette Childress with a program that's coming out, um, called Preserving Indiana OPRO Grants. Um, there's a lot of flexibility in the grants. Um, and it is specified that a Main Street organization must be the grant recipient. So our intent is we would work very, very closely with the city. Um, it is not limited to simply facade projects. It could be, um, renovation projects, uh, in our Main Street area downtown. Uh, we're on a short leash on the time a letter of intent has to be submitted and that's the first process and it's due, I believe, next week.
I think so.
Uh, so Angel Lisa's helping administer. We have a potential of up to $2 million in grants with a ten percent match or $200,000 back if we were able to secure maximum funds. So, um, we like to work together with the city, asking your permission to do that and, uh, get our letter of intent submitted. Uh, the city will be considered in their terminology as a partner to the Main Street organization, uh, of which most of you would know. The city now holds our Main Street revolving loan fund money. Uh, with, there was some conversation that even some of the existing money that we have may be uh, able to use that as a part of the gr, uh, match.
Yes.
And it is, it is a two-year program, I would say.
So this is just asking permission to submit the rev, the, the letter of interest.
The letter of intent and then, uh, they will.
Or should it be intent instead of interest? Letter of intent instead of letter of interest?
Uh, there's a letter of intent that we will from Discover Conneville put out and then.
And we're doing the letter of interest. That's right.
Some business owners' letters. Um, just basically, um, showing that we have support to revitalize, renovate our downtown areas, Main Street area.
So this would be on be, on behalf of City Council?
That would be correct.
Questions? If not, they obtain permission to submit Preserving Indiana Letter of Interest?
He just needs a motion.
Need a motion. Yes.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Could you hear us, Bill?
Yeah, aye.
Okay. Any opposed, same sign? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we should do a little more tomorrow. We're, Angelis hopefully have gotten some answers back from Colect and we're gonna meet tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Oh, what?
Thank you.
What time tomorrow morning?
Ten o'clock.
Okay, he's gonna know that back. Okay.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Okay, item X is a duplicate. Uh, we, that's what happens when Diane's gone and I add stuff to the agenda.
Not just Diana, the other Diana.
No, the other Diana. She was out and I added so, and she didn't see it. So that's my fault. Okay, item four, any old business? Any miscellaneous business?
Uh, I'd like to congratulate the Conneville High School graduates of 2021. I know that's personal for three of us up here at least. My granddaughter, your daughter and your son, Rosemary's son, Chad's daughter and my granddaughter all graduated. And it was a very nice ceremony and, and it was, just really proud of them. My, I'm gonna blow her horn. My granddaughter was one of four three-year graduates. And, uh, I'm just really proud of all of them. It was, it was very neat. So congratulations.
Yep, it was a great day. Brad, are you under old business or miscellaneous?
Somebody had asked me to give a quick report on the sidewalk project, so I was just gonna tell what's going on with that. The, uh, we're kind of stuck in the three hundred block of Central right now. The contractor lost their subcontractor to do concrete work, so they had to secure everyone. And they are, they were actually out there today ready for it, but it started raining again. So as soon as the rain quits, that three hundred block will start rolling back together. Um, we're not gonna allow them to tear anything else up until they get that block completed. So we're kind of stuck in this two-block area. But we hope to see, I think, real progress in the next few days of non-rain.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous client? You guys have anything out there?
No.
Okay. All right, public forum, anyone from the public have anything to say? Anyone out there? You're laughing. You guys have anything you want to say?
It was, um, I definitely, uh, seen a lot of stuff that was interesting to me, but I can't really come up with any questions right now. I was definitely, uh, I'm kind of hung up on what you guys were getting at with the officer that you wanted to hire. I guess I'm just not. Like I don't quite understand his entire role when it comes to, um, like issuing ordinance.
Does he come to the podium?
Yeah, I'm below.
Oh.
I was going, I was being nice, let you finish, but come to the podium, just state your name and address, please.
So I'm Austin, so the eight twenty-four Western Avenue here in town. And, um, really I'm just curious about the officer's role that he's gonna be performing when it comes to issuing ordinance. So, um, I'm more or less curious about like what kind of, like what we're doing to help people as well. They're having ordinance issues or having a problem following ordinance. So like, are we gonna be sending this guy out as just like a physical notification, be like, hey, you should pick up your yard? Or is it gonna be kind of a more heavy-handed approach? Cause I.
No.
Okay.
Let me, let me, it's a, it's, he's not gonna be creating ordinances. We create the ordinances.
Right, right.
We have ordinances which would say how to maintain your property. You know, you can't have cars parked out with no license plates or anything out on the street. Um, gotta have your grass mowed. Can't let your grass go, which we see there's a lot of that right now.
Right.
But there's been a lot of confusion in our ordinances because they're kind of scattered everywhere. They're not a synergistic approach, women are all together. So um, what he's gonna do is, my approach is always mediation.
Right.
I'm not an arbitrary model. There's two types. The model, attorneys love arbitration. I mean, that's just, it's the school. If I go to court, you're arbitrated out. Mine's mediation, was I tried to mediate before it gets to that point.
Right.
So if, say you haven't mowed your grass. Who knows the reason? You might have been hurt, might have been whatever. He's just gonna see it. He's gonna knock on your door and say, sir, you have, uh, a violation of your grass or ordinance. Um, and you need to get that rectified in X amount of days. And he's gonna work with people. It's, it's not coming in saying, Dan, you, you, you got a fifty dollar fine right away for not mowing your grass. That's, that's not what we're trying to do.
That was really the, like, the main concern that I had too. I just didn't know, uh, I didn't know like what his limitations were, were gonna be. And I didn't understand quite the, um.
Yep.
Somebody brought it up earlier. It was about, um, like qualifications or just, um. Kind of like the workflow or like the process, like your workflow process, whatever, like what's.
Yes.
Not, not qualifications necessarily, but like just what.
It's just, it's just operating procedures.
Right, right.
So a lot of that, that's why Jeff and I are, are writing those. Jeff's very good at mediation. Um, that's why I think Jeff for one, because he understands mediation. He knows that's where I want to go. And so we're writing the SOPs. This is how you handle a situation. The officer I had was very good. The key is, is the follow-up. So he, he meets you and says, hey, you got seven days. Please get this done. Uh, cause there are fines and penalties if you don't. We can issue right away, but we're not. At the end of that time period, if you haven't done anything, okay, now here's your options. You can take the fine or the city's gonna come mow it. It's gonna cost you X. So the first road, the first route is let's work with them. If it's someone who's a continual offender, they don't work with us, then that's when we can ramp it up.
That actually sounds a lot more fair. That's kind of what I, what I was having in my head. That actually sounds like the, the optimal route for sure. I thought it was almost kind of a heavy-handed approach is what it sounded like for a minute, but I kind of, I figured that's what you were going.
We're glad you asked because there may be people watching on TV who thought the same way and you helped us clarify.
Yes.
It can be heavy-handed, but we don't want it to be. It's a last resort.
That's kind of what I just wanted to avoid. Like that's, you know, that was the opinion I wanted to voice. Like I just don't want some guy knocking on my door saying, hey, your grass ain't cut. Thirty days, punk.
No, 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 no. No, that's not the intended goal.
Right.
Why would they continue to do that? Only when they continue.
Right.
Yeah. If you have to knock on your door every week, that's a different story.
And we do appreciate you taking the interest to come and listen and ask those questions. Because as you see, we don't have an influx of people doing that.
Right.
Regardless of what some people may think, we want those chairs full. We want to hear.
Absolutely.
We, we don't know unless you tell us.
Well, I guess while we're on it, um, the Duke Energy thing with the, the light poles, I heard you mentioning you were trying to put outlets in the light poles for, is that for all over the town then?
No.
Just downtown? Okay.
We have twenty-four lights that we're doing downtown. We do the sidewalks. And we want outlets on top, so we put Christmas lights on and different things.
Uh, how are they being powered? Is it with, by Duke Energy?
Duke. It's the only choice we have.
Have we considered, uh, solar panels for the tops of these as well?
Yes.
Okay, cool deal. Cause that's, that's where I was thinking in the back of my head too, is like, hopefully we can get some solar panels to put on top of our lights.
We've looked at them. They, uh, there was, I want to be very general here. There was the reason the solar didn't work downtown as well is the buildings, the amount of sun they're gonna get. And the batteries were so expensive for those, the cost of lights were gonna be a lot higher. Solar technology has changed and I get that. I like it.
Yeah, it's still progressing. It's not where.
But it was not gonna work in our downtown area because of all the, the structures and the shade and the amount of sun they were gonna get.
Right.
At least that's what they're, I was hoping.
All right. I think that's about all I got for right now. I appreciate you all.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Hey, I have something else, um, to mention, um, about the, the park swimming pool. Um, I know everyone read on Facebook about, um, you know, someone using drugs, um, parents dropping their kids off, uh, not being supervised. Um, and, you know, like in, in the young people that, that's being hired at the pool, they can't go up to, um, the, these kids and say, hey, stop doing this, stop doing that. They're not the parents. These young kids are not the parents. So, you know, my thinking is that what I would like to see, but I was gonna ask Bolo, is it any way possible that we can have a police officer from time to time to just go by the pool, just, just, just to, you know, to, to, to show the presence of we got law enforcement down.
How many of you speak on all of it?
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
You need to explain. You, she works there.
I've had so much fun. It was a wild weekend.
Okay.
Um, so obviously with all the social media posts, um, I spoke to Catherine and she is, she's planning to meet with Chad with some of the ideas that, the changes that we may need to make because of those kids getting dropped off.
But then if they get dropped off, if they don't get dropped off, the park is gonna lose money as well.
Right.
So do we.
It's, I mean, it's a hard call. Maybe we need to change the age. Maybe I'm, I'm not sure what the overall solution is. Um, although I will speak on the guard's job is to watch the kids in the water.
Right.
They're not to take their eyes off of the water.
Right.
We have three, maybe four guards in, like, so, um, Saturday we were really busy, so we had all four guards in their post. They're watching the water. Um, they're not watching the kids on the deck.
Right.
All of my other workers are working. We do not have people out watching the kids on the deck.
Right.
The managers are managing the workers and I am walking the deck, but I can't babysit children. So we do have an issue with, in my opinion, we have too many kids getting dropped off. My estimate would we probably had a hundred unsupervised kids there. When I say unsupervised, they're not coming with an adult.
Yeah.
And so we have a few ideas. I don't know how we're going completely curb all of it. Um, sadly, the situation with the, the woman with the drugs. Um, it was at the end of the day on Saturday, someone reported to me. I checked on her. I had a guard with her. I called dispatch. They took care of the situation. And that's just an indication of where we are in our community. And it's sad. It's very, very sad.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of things got blown up on social media and I think that that's also sad because people aren't telling the whole story, the true story. Um, so someone posted something about the guy on Friday. I had already spoken with the man. The kids were making the situation much worse. Um, none of the workers observed him doing anything wrong. I went ahead and called dispatch. I did stand there and talked to, um, Fee and Morefield for a while. We just kind of discussed what was going on and things like that. And then I did go ahead and ask the guy to leave because the situation had already gotten blown up so much. Um, situations are being dealt with, but we are not babysitting children. So if there are rowdy kids, then apparently start joining up with their kids. Um, I don't know. I don't know what the solution is for that, but as far as the two major situations that got blown up on social media, they weren't dealt with. You know, we're not just sitting back and letting these things happen.
It's good.
Um, it's just, our community is sad. It's, it's baby sad all weekend.
I don't think it's just our community.
No, it's, it's a lot of.
Social, social, so, so, and I don't think you meant to imply that either. I'm not saying that, but I think social media, there's an adage, you know, if it's on the internet, it must be true. And if, if it's on social media, it's not necessarily true. I mean, it's, it's somebody's opinion or some, or hearsay and.
And when you have twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids putting information on Snapchat and everybody on Facebook and start sharing it, lots of questions. This is coming from.
Absolutely.
But like I said, the kids made the situation way worse on Friday and than it ever had to be. And I, I mean, I can't prove anything. But they also said they need to take the man's phone. I'm not, I don't have the right to take somebody's phone and the police officers are not going to confiscate a person's phone either. Like you, they're, I don't know. I'm hoping that calms down.
I know for years.
Calms down.
I think Jen's real concern is that it's our community.
Yes, it is.
I guess it happens to all, every place, but this is our community.
Right, I agree with that. But yeah, yeah.
I see how sad it is all the time in my regular job.
Right.
And this is just a whole new level of. And this is just a whole new level of seeing how sad it is.
Yeah.
So my one, my, I'm just, I'm keeping a positive attitude about having to do this show in the first place this summer. I get to see my babies all summer long.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, I get to see former students.
Yeah.
We have some really great kids that are working at the pool, you know, kind of did great today, and, you know, it's just, there's a lot of good there, and hopefully the, the bad will just kind of start working itself out.
Well, I guess my thing, this would be a question, maybe it shouldn't be asked here, but you used to say something about rowdy kids, just because parents drop their kids off does not necessarily mean that they can stay, if they're too rowdy and whatever, they can be asked to leave.
Yes.
And, and in this day and age, most kids have phones, so you're not putting them out in the street with no...
I totally kick kids out.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but the four that I've kicked out, I know these kids, and I have conversations with them, and kind of like with the officers thing, like, I build a relationship.
Right.
And even with the guy, with the man, I was not mean to him, and he was actually polite. I mean, I had gone up to him, I had already spoken with him, and he was polite to me, and then, I mean, he wasn't unhappy about being kicked out, but, you know, to me, I felt like that was more, just as much for his own good, for his own safety at that point, because the kids were crazy, but...
I don't envy, I don't envy your job.
I don't.
I don't envy your job at all, not at all.
Children have always been dropped off up there.
Single women, that's all that I get.
Times have always changed recently.
Oh, absolutely, that's not something, that's not something new, yeah, yeah, you know.
But the kids are just...
The kids are...
Kids are different, how you can deal with them.
Yes, they are.
The kids are, yeah.
That would scare me to death, to drop my kids off up there.
Yeah.
That would scare me to death, to drop my kids off up there.
Yeah, I did it as well.
No.
But I mean, we have, but it's the kids in that neighborhood, and this is my school district, so I knew that the one advantage that I would have is, that I'm going to know these kids, they already know me, and hopefully that'll start making a difference. I mean, it does a lot of it, because we have a few rowdy ones that, because it's presence, you know, like, I walk out on the deck, and they're like, oh, the spirit's here. It's just, you know?
Yes.
But I'm also getting lots of hugs, lots and lots of hugs.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're in the right, sounds like we've got you in the right...
And you're impacting in a good way, too.
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate that, like I said, I don't envy you your job.
So hopefully, like I said, all of the craziness will just start working itself out, but we are definitely doing the best we can, like, and I'm new, so I don't know everything, we have a lot of new kids working, they don't know everything, and I think that people kind of forget that, these are kids working, they're kids, you know, like, they're doing the best that they can.
Right. It sounds like you're laying the ground rules, too, I mean, it's going to take some, get some, getting used to.
And I know that Amy did as well, you know, like, when she was the, the manager, she did a great job, but, you know, it's time for her to make a change, what she needed, so, I don't know, hopefully.
Thank you.
But if Bolas wants to send somebody, maybe on Fridays and Saturdays, I really just think, though, I'm so grateful that, that our police officers, they do show up.
Yeah.
You know, like, I mean, and if they want to, like, if they're available to come, because I, like I said, presence, I just think that if you have, kind of like our school resource officers, we have just go through the building, and so if people know that we're going to have an officer just randomly walk the deck and walk back out, you know, maybe, maybe that'll curb some of the, the situations, I don't know.
It actually helps if an officer drives up, drives by there slow, we used to have to do that all the time, changes things, just the presence.
Let's do that, Bolas, we'll talk tomorrow about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's talk tomorrow about that, how we can help.
Sure, I mean, we've done that several times, yeah, not a problem.
We have to do more, whatever.
Other than walking the deck, you know, we have twenty-five employees, so, you know, enough if we pull up, work gets out on that thing, so, no issues with that.
Yeah.
Obviously, if there's ever an issue, you guys, if you know, if it's an issue, call us, and we'll be there.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, I ran into that phone now, so, but I was also texting Sergeant Brown to kind of, before I called dispatch, just to kind of get him to...
And those issues are isolated, I mean, that's not, it happens all day, every day, I mean, it's isolated, so I don't want the public to think that's happening every day or all the hours of the time the pool's open, because it's not.
Well, we weren't hit in the bud.
And the kids love seeing the police officers anyways, like, the little bitty ones, they run up to them and talking to them.
Okay, let's talk about that tomorrow.
It's the bad issues, it's the bad issues you hear about, you don't hear about all the good ones that are behaving and doing what they're supposed to do and having a good time.
Okay, is there anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion a second, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.